Good evening. City of Opa-locka, Planning and Zoning Meeting for October 11, 2022. Here I called the order. Can we have a roll call?
Board member Barnes.
Present.
Board member Mango.
Present.
Board member Mata.
Present.
Chairman Guerrero.
Present.
Attendance confirmed. And for the record, board member Johnson and board member Herbert Smith will not be in attendance tonight. Thank you.
Lord, we ask for your guidance in these troubled times, and we ask that you help us make the best decisions we can for our city. Amen. Can we have a motion for approval of minutes from the meeting on 9/13/2022?
I move to approve the previous meeting's minutes.
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, I'm sorry. They said at the same time. Who said second? It was at the same time? Okay, Mata. Okay. All right, board member Barnes.
Approved.
Board member Mango.
Approved.
Board member Mata.
Approved.
Chairman Guerrero.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Okay. I want to state for the record that for the first three items on tonight's agenda, I will be recusing myself from voting and from commenting due to a possible conflict of interest. So, that being said, can we get the item number one read into the record?
Chair, board members, the first item on the agenda this evening is a resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Opa-locka, Florida, recommending minimum lot variance approval for the construction of a four-story multifamily apartment building on the property located at 1300 Sesame Street and identified by Folio number 0821210021110 in the R3 zoning district, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The client wishes to...
Before they speak, Chair, members of the board, Gregory Gay, items one, two, and three are companion items. The first item that we'll be listening to is related to the variance for this particular project. The second one will be for the site plan, and the third one will be for the development agreement for this particular development. The applicant is here and would like to make a presentation at this time.
All right, personal. Thank you very much. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate you guys for prayer and for saluting the American flag. I feel very patriotic here today. And it's a really great way of doing things. This is my first time here, meeting with you guys for the City of Opa-locka, and I think that's outstanding. I appreciate that. I remember the days when I was in elementary school, we used to do prayer, and I think that's very important, and that's missing a lot in our country. So, thank you for that. In regards to 1300 Sesame Street, my name is Eric Scarborough from Scarborough Investment Enterprises. This is Sarah Scarborough, also from Scarborough Investment Enterprises. I am the operating manager. And in regards to the variance for the square footage, in order to be able to use this as a zone R3, I believe we were just short 109 square feet or something or so. So I think for what we are going to bring to the table and the ability of being able to have a multifamily building with two-bedroom, 900-square-foot spacious family units, I think the City of Opa-locka would benefit from that. I understand you guys have copies of the plans. Would you like for me to show anything? Or do you guys have copies up there?
I believe copies were provided within the package itself.
I got some extra copies if you want me to pass it around. Okay, so I am I'm looking at page 101 where it says the the square footage of the proposed building. Do the board members have any questions? In regards to the first item?
Just to clarify, your request is that you're under the required amount of square footage, or you're over the required amount of square footage?
We are under the required amount for the R3.
Yep.
I believe it's supposed to be 9,000 square feet.
9,600.
9,600, and we are 8714, so I apologize. We're about 900 square feet short.
Okay. Is there any particular reason why you're under? Is there any particular reason?
No, the lot is zoned that way. And and the lot is just zoned that way. And so in order to use the maximum amount of what that lot is zoned for, we want to use it as an R3. We can't use it as an R3 because of the size, but because it's a corner lot, it's still susceptible to be able to use it. It makes sense to be able to use it as a full-fledged R3, which is a four-story building, three stories living units, two family, two two-bedroom units each floor, and the whole entire first floor is going to be used as parking. So, since it's a corner lot, similar lots in that neighborhood that might be next to mine, for example, that have the same lot size, they will not be able to meet the R3 requirements because, you know, they only have one side of frontage, whereas a corner lot, you have two sides. So I have more capacity for parking and the ability to be able to build this four-story structure with enough comfort, so that way everyone can park. And and the two-bedroom units are spacious 900-square-foot units. So, and as you see, the picture that's portrayed of the building, we're looking to beautify the neighborhood as well. And we believe, I've even spoken to different neighbors, and they're excited and they're pumped about it. And I believe that this is going to bring the incentive for surrounding neighbors to also beautify their homes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? No questions? You're good?
If the board does not have any questions, we can have Mr. Lee come up and make a presentation on staff's recommendation.
Okay. You're you're done with the presentation?
Well, that was only for number one.
Yeah, we have to take them one at a time.
Okay. So yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. We're here from staff.
I apologize. It's my first variance. Bear with me.
Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee?
For the board, good afternoon. General Lee, City of Opa-locka, Planning and Community Development. As it relates to this project, this is this is a request for a variance. This is a request for a variance for the minimum lot size. The property owner obtained a property that is not the size that our code requires for multifamily development. But it is an R3 multifamily zone, the property. So what is supposed to be developed there can't be developed unless they request a variance so that they can develop a property that's less than the 9,600. In that area, it's an area that includes multifamily properties adjacent to residential, single-family properties, and that's how the neighborhood is made up. And this particular property is an R3 at 8714. The property owner has requested this, and as we look at the standards that we have concerning variances, this is not something that the property owner has done to he caused his own demise to not be able to develop the property as the zoning requires. The property owner has given good effort to try to obtain additional property to be able to accommodate the zoning requirement for the lot size. The property owner has not reduced the requirements for the size of the units to be able to maximize his dollars and give a substandard product, but instead has by the site plan created decent and large two-bedroom units that are not minimum sized to be able to make his advance. And so, with that being the case, and with them not being at fault or not being self-imposed as the reasons are for them not having the size that they need, they are requesting a variance to be able to develop this property. This site is going to have on it a four-story, six-unit apartment complex. Staff has reviewed what they have presented, and because the Community Development and Planning Department is laser-focused on increasing the numbers of residents in the city, this falls into that category for improving the city by allowing new people to move in. And so we recommend approval of this request, and I'm waiting for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any question?
What's the minimum area requirements for bedrooms that that are currently within the city zoning?
In the R2 for two bedrooms?
Yeah.
I believe, I believe it is 700? I think it's 700 square feet. Okay, one-bedroom apartments should be I'm sorry, efficiencies of 500 square feet, one-bedroom 625, two-bedroom 750, and for any additional bedrooms up to 1,000 square feet.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Lee. Okay. Okay, if there are no other questions, can we have a motion for approval?
Move to approve item one.
Second.
Roll call?
Board member Barnes.
Yes.
Board member Mango.
Yes.
Board member Mata.
Yes.
Item one, passed.
We have item number two.
Item number two is a resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Opa-locka, Florida, recommending the site plan review approval for the construction of a four-story multifamily apartment building on the property located at 1300 Sesame Street and identified by Folio 0821210021110 in the R3 zoning district, providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Gregory Gay, this is the second item related to this particular project. This actually gets into the actual design of the facility itself. I believe the client, the property owner has already kind of expressed that it is a six-unit building with internal and external parking on the site, landscaping as well. In addition to that, this is a project that is within the R3 zoning, which is appropriate for this particular location. I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that?
No, thank you very much for helping me out with that. But we did make sure that we had the adequate amount of parking space. And as I mentioned before, the fact that it's a corner lot, it made it possible to do so. We're also not trying to cut corners. We want to make it a beautiful building, just as you see it, a little bit more modernized. There were thoughts, we had thoughts about trying to move forward with Opa-locka-style looks, but after the analysis that we did, more people are susceptible to the modernization look, and this is one of the things that they just enjoy doing. And a lot of these buildings, similar in design and in color, more and more people are moving into these apartments, more working-class citizens. And in some cases, you know, sometimes it's people that's not a you know, not a family, but maybe someone who works and needs. The good thing about the area is that you have train and access to public transportation. So, I believe that from the analysis that we did, they will fill up pretty quickly, and there will be good working-class citizens moving in to the building. And the colors are, what you see is what you're going to get with us. We plan on, you know, I even have we went through the different landscaping plans. We're going to put some Foxtail palms, some live oaks, some Calusa, and we're even throwing in some southern magnolia trees in there. And we think that'll increase the beautification of the neighborhood. And again, we believe that it'll incentivize the neighbors to do the same thing to their properties. And that'll complete my presentation for item number two.
Any questions? No?
Any questions for me?
Staff, anything to add on the?
Gerald Lee, Planning and Community Development, nothing major to to add, except I wanted to reiterate, in your packages, you don't have the information he just divulged about the landscaping plan. He did provide the plan in his drawings, but he didn't identify the individual plants and the quantities to give you a better understanding. And when I received it from him, it was too late for including it in the packages. And as he stated, there will be 27 Clocia, there will be 45 Golden Tip Winter Creepers, two Live Oaks, two southern magnolias, and four Foxtail Palms. Now, one thing I know about this board is there's a certain member who does not care for palm trees. And this plan does include shade trees as a part of the tree canopy, and then it gives a good quantity of bushes and shrubs. And so I like the project for what it does, but it also provides shade for once, right? Now, as far as the site plan goes, all of the site plan requirements have been met, and by that I mean setbacks, building heights, except minimum lot, and he has requested a variance. With that being said, our recommendation is for approval of this project, and we support it.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any questions there, staff?
What's the minimum parking requirements, R3 for two bedrooms? Is it 1.5?
R3 is 1.5, and they have 13, and they have six units.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Hey, can we get a motion on item number two?
Move to approve item number two.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Board member Barnes.
Approved.
Board member Mango.
Yes.
Board member Mata.
Approved.
Item two, passed.
Can we get item number three read in the record?
Item number three on the agenda this evening is a resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Opa-locka, Florida, recommending development agreement review approval for the construction of a four-story multifamily apartment building on the property located at 1300 Sesame Street and identified by Folio 0821210021110 in the R3 zoning district, providing for an effective date.
In regards to the resolution, I think it's self-explanatory of what was discussed earlier. I don't have any presentation for that aspect, unless you have any questions for me.
I do. Are any of your units set aside for affordability?
Can you repeat that?
Are any of your units set aside for affordability?
I believe they're all going to be affordable.
Can you define affordable?
Pretty much less than the going rate that's going. As you know, I find it very difficult to know that some of these apartment buildings, some of these two-bedroom units are going for $2,000, even $3,000 a month, and some, depending on where you are in the city. But I think we're in par with that, and it should be in the range between $2,000, $2,500 a month.
Are you aware of the income levels of the City of Opa-locka?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
You think they can afford $2,000 to $2,500 apartments?
Well, from the research analysis that we did, we're finding that a lot of these apartment buildings are paying $2,000 a month right now, and these are older units, older, older, single-family homes, and older, single-family apartment buildings. A lot of them are, which are Section 8. We are thinking of going away from Section 8 because we feel like Section 8 probably it's going to go against what we're trying to do with the City of Opa-locka, and I think that kind of goes against what City of Opa-locka is trying to do. But we are definitely trying to keep the we're definitely trying to keep the rent affordable, but from the research analysis that we did, that's in part with what they're paying currently now.
Is there any way that we can see that research analysis or no?
I didn't bring anything with me now, but yeah, that's what I've been, that's what I've been finding.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
If staff?
Gerald Lee, Planning and Community Development. On par with the other two approvals that have already gone forward, the most important aspect of the development agreement is the standards of what was proposed in the site plan, that they adhere to that, and also that they promote City of Opa-locka employment to the residents through this development process. And that's a part of the development agreement. It's a standard document. So that information is listed in the actual agreement. So if they do that, then that's what we were looking for, that they would support city residents in the employment through the development process. Staff recommends approval. I await any questions.
Question for staff?
Yes, sir.
I've always wondered, are you able to put in a development agreement a certain amount of affordable housing units?
That's a legal question.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If those properties are owned by the city and the city enters into a partnership agreement with the developer, then those conditions can be placed in the agreement. Or if there's enhancements that are being provided to the developer and that is negotiated in the agreement, there's another opportunity for the city to include some of those provisions. However, when it's owned outright and they're meeting the city code, the city is prohibited from mandating that that's affordable housing. The legislature changed the provisions where those terms were negotiated previously to mandate that cities do that, you have to compensate the developer for the taking. They view it as a taking. So if they give affordable housing units, the city has to compensate them for that. And so it's very difficult to put that into the agreement. It's not like it used to be.
And the city doesn't have the capability at the moment to do the taking, is my understanding? Is that a fair assumption?
It would not be recommended. There's legalities around that as well as the cost for doing so. So no, most jurisdictions are not entering into that. There's been many discussions on state level trying to address affordable housing, trying to do a partnership with developers when the city owns any land, or to give them enhancements, additional units that they're allowed to develop to preserve some of the units for affordable housing. But unless the city's giving something in return, they can no longer mandate that a certain number of units be reserved for affordable housing.
Understood. And members of the board and chair, this may assist you with an answer. This particular property is not within our Community Redevelopment Agency District. It's actually one parcel away, and that's where you have the opportunities, as the attorney has expressed, where there may be an opportunity to bring down the costs for the rentals to make certain units more affordable. That situation does not exist with this particular property. So we weren't really in a position, the city was not in a position through the CRA to bring that particular cost down. Okay, one last question. This question. So just try to get an understanding. The average income of the City of Opa-locka for a resident is less than $30,000 a year. Rent in a location that was just sort of estimated at 2,000 to 2,500, if we go at the low end of 2,000, that puts us at 14? Or the, no, 24 for the first? for the, no, twenty-four for the, for the first year, which is seventy-five percent of one's income without, with, without state taxes that would be taken out from there. So I guess my, my, my main question is, is the goal to attract new residents into the area? Or is it to provide quality housing for individuals who currently live here that don't have it?
Good question. The market would determine the opportunity.
Will the market or will capitalism? Because before I left,
I think it's the same.
Before I left, the, the, the market said that the rent was not as high as it was, and literally nothing has changed as far as income to precipitate such an increase. Taxes haven't gone up to where developers have to pay more. Literally, the only thing that happens is because everybody else charged more, everybody, whatever doing it, we can too.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean it's right though.
Well, well, let me just say this. Oftentimes, when you have section eight payments, the resident is not making that payment.
Oh, I know.
That's federal. So the landlords are receiving huge amounts, but it's not coming from the tenant. And so what I heard was his research told him that these are the numbers. But if those numbers are being paid by the federal government, they may not be actual. So when you put that number and you don't have section eight, it may not be realized.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, can we have a motion?
Mister Chair?
Yes.
There's two members of the public here. We need to open it to the public and see if they would like to speak. I believe the one gentleman is here for the last item, but I'm not sure if anyone else would like to speak.
All right, at this moment, I'll open a public hearing. And anybody wish to speak on the matter? Public hearing closed? Can we get a motion?
Move to approve item number three.
Second.
Roll call.
For member Barnes?
No.
For member Mango?
Yes.
For member Mata?
Yes.
Item passed.
Okay, thank you. All right, can we get item number four?
Yes. The next item on the agenda is a resolution of the planning and zoning board of the city of Opa-locka, Florida, recommending the site plan review approval for the construction of a six-story multifamily apartment building on property located at the corner of Sesame Street and Alibaba Avenue and identified by folio number zero eight two one two one zero zero four one eight six one in the B three zoning district, providing for an effective date.
We had the applicant?
Good evening, everyone. I'm representing Northeast Hundred Thirteen Terrace LLC. We're proposing, as you guys mentioned, a six-story forty-five unit residential and about fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred square feet of commercial. So that's what we're proposing to do. I didn't bring any presentation. The owners of the, of the property, they're attending religious observance, so I'm stepping in here, so.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mister Chair?
Yeah.
Sorry, if you can state your name for the.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Harry Joseph. Harry, Harry, H A R O Y, Joseph. Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm Mr. Lee.
Gerard Lee, planning and community development department. This is a site plan review, site plan review for the construction of a six-story forty-five unit apartment complex. It's gonna include forty units that are two-bedroom, five units that are three-bedroom. They're providing approximately fifty parking spaces, which is which includes parking for the units and for the sixteen hundred fifty square foot retail space on the first floor. This property is within a residential R three zoning district, but the city has adopted a new historic downtown ordinance that covers this property that provides new opportunities and standards for its review. This gives options on setbacks. It gives options on parking. It gives options on ingress and egress. And so this property is awkward or, or as, as, as unstandardized as the shape of the property is. It provides a fifteen-foot front setback, a, a ten-foot side setback, and a greater than thirty foot setback in the rear. The challenges that I have with this, with this site plan are these. We did not receive a traffic impact study, traffic impact statement, traffic impact study. And being that it has forty-five units, I think it's gonna be extremely important. Secondly, we did not receive the standardized code compliant list of landscaping for the site because of where it is and that it's in the historic district. It's gonna be extremely important that landscaping be provided. And I don't think we should move forward without it. Lastly, without those two things, we're not recommending approval. We're asking for deferment. And so we can get with the project owners and, and applicants and have them address better the landscaping, the traffic requirements, and the circulation in general. We are not opposed to the, to the project, but it must meet the standards. Lastly, because it is in a historic district, historic downtown, not historic district, historic downtown district, it should pay strict homage to the Moorish architecture requirements that are espoused, that are supported, that are embraced in the city. And it doesn't really address any of those. That is our presentation. We don't recommend approval. We recommend deferral. And we'll be back when everything else is what it needs to be. Any questions?
Thank you, Mister Lee. If I have a question? Can you give me that unit breakdown again?
I'm sorry?
Can you give me the unit breakdown again?
Forty-two bedroom units, five three-bedroom units. Now, the reason that the parking is, uh, cause, cause I figured the first thing you're gonna look at is it's one and a half per for the forty and two each for the five. But within this zoning district, it allows for a reduction of about thirty-five percent of the parking that's required.
Sure, because you're crossing the train station.
Yes, sir.
I got you.
Okay.
The, I mean, I wasn't, I mean, I know it's a TOD. That's not what I was asking. I was asking because on the unit plans, on one of them, uh, there's a clever room that's labeled the den. And that, and that clever room that's labeled the den is adjacent to a bathroom. And even though I know it was technically a two-bedroom, part of my fears is that that's marketed as a three-bedroom. And we all know it can be a bedroom if it doesn't have windows in it. And they ain't got no windows.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Just saying.
That's good. That's good.
So if we're gonna defer the items to a future date because of the missing traffic study, then we will get a presentation again at the time when it comes before us. So I guess if.
Don't we have to move to defer though?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, got you.
And my question for, we'll go to the next item and defer that one also. Can we do them both?
Yes.
You do them one at a time. So we're on this item. Does applicant have any additional information or comments for staff?
We're currently working on getting those. So we are currently working on getting those traffic impact studies and the landscape information to you guys by next month. So we should be ready by November.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a heads up, I'm not a fan of palm trees.
All right, I heard that. I heard that.
Adam Palm trees.
I'll make sure to note that.
Just, just letting you know.
All right.
Like, the more large trees that you can plant, the cooler our city can be.
Okay.
The more walkable our city can be, the more healthier our city can be. If you keep giving me palm trees, those things don't happen.
All right, all right. I'll make sure to note that. Thank you. All right. All right, can we get a motion?
Deferment of item number four. I move to defer item number four until a later date, once the applicant has conducted his traffic impact study as well as his landscape project, and then has delivered those items to community development for review.
Get a second?
Second.
Roll call.
For member Barnes?
Yes.
For member Mango?
Yes.
For member Mata?
Yes.
Chairman Guerrero?
Yes.
Item deferred.
Okay.
Final item on the agenda this evening is a resolution of the planning and zoning board of the city of Opa-locka, Florida, recommending development agreement review approval for the construction of a six-story multifamily apartment building on the property located at the corner of Sesame Street and Alibaba Avenue and identified by folio zero eight two one two one zero zero four one eight six one in the R three zoning district, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And this item is the company item, item number four. Can we get a motion for deferment?
I move to defer item number four. Number five, contingent upon the applicant delivering the items to community development for review.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
For member Barnes?
Yes.
For member Mango?
Yes.
For member Mata?
Yes.
Chairman Guerrero?
Yes.
Item five deferred.
Okay, any other?
Uh, yes, board members of the commission, um, you, you may have noticed that we do have a new board member that is with us. This is his first meeting, Mister Aldo Mata. Uh, we'd like to say thank you and welcome to being a part of our uh, planning and zoning board. As you can see, this can be a very exciting board as far as guiding the development that occurs within the city of Opa-locka. So we welcome you and, and hopefully you will have an opportunity to spread your wings and, and give us a wealth of knowledge and experience that you may have had with other activities outside of the city and bring that knowledge to this particular board. So welcome.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing before we go? Um, I'd like to thank both Mister Gay and Mister Lee. Um, they recently took time out of their busy schedule to meet with some University of Miami architecture students who are doing some work here in the city, reimagining what it means to design the Shabani Park as well as the Shabani Village Center so that we can get excitement and understand, and get people to understand that Coral Gables isn't the only desirable destination in Miami-Dade County, but that there's a lot of amazing things happening within the city of Opa-locka. So I thank them for taking time out of their schedule to chat with the young people and ask a lot of their questions about why the great seat of Opa-locka is a potential destination going forward. So thank you both.
Okay, bet. Meeting adjourned.